Good evening and welcome to the April 23rd, 2013. Meeting of the Glendale City Council being called in order at 6:02 PM. Here we roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian and invocation by City Clerk Cardi Kasakian.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tomorrow marks a very solemn day for many of our city's residents. It will mark the 98th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, which began with the persecution of thousands in the decades prior and culminated in the final solution of the deportation and massacre of over 1 million Armenians throughout their ancestral lands in Asia Minor. Whether we take the day off to remember and protest Turkish government's denial or we simply go about our day, let us all spend a few moments tomorrow contemplating what each of us can do to make the world a place where genocide is no longer a possibility. Let us take a moment and reflect upon our grief and seek ways to turn it into something positive for the cause of global peace. Let us pray that the martyrdom of those who perished was not in vain and that their death will hold meaning for us today. Let us pray that their souls of those who were killed and for whom justice has been delayed and deferred may for one day rest in peace tomorrow, knowing that they have not been forgotten and that we, the living, their survivors and their fortunate, we plead their case through prayer, remembrance, and protest. May the souls of the parish be illuminated as we pray for peace tonight and always. Amen.
Anybody have any reports?
Agenda for the April 23rd, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Thursday, April 18th, 2013 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, I'd like to take something out of order one last time. Today I took over my beloved Sammy's food and stuff that was left to the past in the Humane Society. What I didn't expect is they would hand me the ashes of Sammy, who I now have in my office and whose spirit will be with me as long as I'm on the council. It hit me pretty hard. That was the beginning of the day. Later in the day, something happened. Mr. Najarian, if you remember, five years ago on April the first, you were the mayor and I was at Huntington Memorial Hospital waiting for the birth of my first granddaughter. Well, today at 11:00 AM, I became a grandfather again to an eight pounds, six pounds girl, 21 and a half inches, and you know where I'm gonna be tomorrow. I'll be down there. I'm sorry I won't be around for the genocide or Denim Day, but, you know, babies don't come along every day. And I'm very happy for my son and his wife. And, well, that's where I'm gonna be. So, just want everybody to know that. That's number four. Don't worry, son, he's still gotta have a Weaver. Boy, that is. So, mostly he's got his orders, marching orders. So, with that, let's go on with presentation appointments.
Presentation appointments at 3:00 is agenda preview for the meetings of April 30th, 2013.
Madam Eres.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for April 30th, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon at 3:30, we do have a Glendale City Council and a Housing Authority meeting and one item, Director of Community Services and Parks. This is regarding the fiscal year 2012-13 Proposed Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act programs. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have one item under consent, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the Energy Trading and Risk Management System Selection Project, adoption of ordinances. We have an ordinance amending section 9.20.145 of the GMC, and this is relating to the issuance of permits to allow consumption, sales, and service of alcohol on designated city property. Under action items, we have three. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding a five-year supply contract of proprietary compressor oil at the Shoal Canyon Landfill Gas Plant. Director of Community Development Plan Check and Field Inspection Services. And lastly, City Attorney and City Manager, this is regarding the appointment of Glendale's representative to the Bob Hope Airport. And that concludes my report.
Do you have no other proclamations yet? I think I have proclamation for the Armenian genocide. This is the first one I signed, I think, in '06 or 2000. Same thing, first proclamation. With that, there's some individuals that are gonna be receiving these, they're triplicates, so if they'd like to come up, whoever's.
3:00 is a proclamation designating April 24, 2013 as Armenian genocide commemoration date.
Thank you. And I'll read one. Whereas the city of Glendale believes that culture diversity is achieved when our entire community acknowledges that its wholeness is based upon the unique strengths of each of its community members, today we can no longer innocently harbor feelings of superiority and separatism in our society. And whereas the Armenian community has participated in and greatly enriched our city through contributions in business, arts, culture, education, and government, and whereas many in our community who are of Armenian descent lost a significant number of family members, belongings, and heritage in the genocide, the memories of this genocide are very painful, and we look forward to the day when this tragedy is universally acknowledged. And whereas we appreciate the efforts of the community volunteers in organizing the Week of Remembrance to commemorate and recognize April 24th as Armenian Genocide Day and urge our representatives and elected officials in Washington DC to do the same. Now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 24th, 2013 as Armenian Commemoration Day and invite all members of the community to participate in the activities and events of the Week of Remembrance. I'd like, Najarian, two seniority, you get one, I get two. Oh wait, there's four of you. I only have three.
They're with each other.
Oh, okay, two of you had to get.
Sheriff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this proclamation that our city has adopted, but our city goes beyond proclamations. Our city is unique in the sense that it is a city that makes sure that the remembrance of the genocide and the prevention of future genocides is an active action on behalf of its citizens. With the Remembrance Week, we have activities that individuals participate in and learn, and it is very important that it is done in that way. So our city is unique in the way that it does it, and I commend our city council for continuing to take that leadership in the country on the remembrance of the genocide and prevention of future genocides. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff, thank you very much for this proclamation. And as we go back for 12 years, in 2001, June, when the city council adopted the resolution to form a citizens' memorial council, and since then, that memorial council has adopted to have Week of Remembrance in the city of Glendale, as Bert said, it's a unique opportunity for the Armenians to make this week Armenian Genocide Commemoration Week. And I'm glad that, as always, being a tradition in this city, to have the event of the 24th at the Alex Theater for tomorrow. And I guess all of us as committee members work hard to make it a success in this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, what is next, please?
City Council and staff comments.
Comments?
Yes.
Ms. Friedman?
First, this weekend, I attended the annual Bras for a Cause fundraiser slash celebration that the Seroptimists do every year, and this is a great event that raises money for breast cancer services and general cancer services in the community, and also for other programs that benefit women and girls in Glendale, in the state of California, and around the world. It was a really wonderful turnout. It looked like it was sold out to me, and it was a big room, it was sold out, it was just confirmed. I know that they raised a lot of money, they raised a lot of awareness, and it was a lot of fun. So I want to congratulate the Seroptimists and to thank them for everything that they do in this community, because they do so much good every single day here in Glendale. I also attended the Arbor Day Celebration, which was at Two Strikes Park up in La Crescenta. It was a very well-attended event, a wonderful community event on a beautiful day. Supervisor Michael Antonovich organized it, and Sheriff Lee Baca was the keynote speaker, and there were many other speakers and many community-related and environmental-related booths, and I think everybody that was there had a great time. I also attended the Earth Day Walk to Artie White Elementary School, which was organized by Artie White and Walk By Glendale, not Walk By, yeah, Walk By Glendale, I think in Safe Routes to Schools. I'm not exactly what groups were, sure what groups were involved, so if I missed anyone or give anyone credit who doesn't deserve it, you know who you are. But it was really wonderful. A bunch of elementary school kids got together. They do, every Friday, they have walking school buses, where instead of having the parents all crowd the schools, a bunch of the students get dropped off in nearby locations and then guardians walk them all to school. So this was a special one, where on Earth Day, they picked up trash along the way, and they were very enthusiastic, they were definitely competitive about who was gonna get the most cigarette butts and the most plastic off the ground, so they did a lot of good, they helped the environment, and they helped themselves, and they had a lot of fun. So congratulations to Artie White. I also went to, with some of my colleagues, the anniversary luncheon for Glendale Youth Alliance, GYA. And for those of you who don't know GYA, it's a great nonprofit organization in Glendale that gives summer jobs and, I think, year-long jobs to at-risk youth. And it also teaches them skills like resume writing and interviewing for jobs, puts money in their pockets, gives them a job, and every time they do this event, and whenever I go, they always bring back alumni who are kids who have gone through the program and hearing their stories of how they were able to really move ahead with their lives and their careers. And some of them are young people, they're not just kids, some of them are people in their twenties, and GYA really gives them a chance and really gives, gets them a lot of times out of dead-end jobs and into the professional world. It's a great organization, and I congratulate all of the awardees. Our city clerk, Artie Kasakian, was one of the awardees, so congratulations, Artie. It was the legacy award, because at his tender age, he managed to be a legacy, which is pretty impressive. So congratulations. And lastly, on another note, I would like to ask my colleagues if they would support staff giving us a report on AB 162, which is a bill in Sacramento that attempts to roll back some of the ability that cities have to regulate cell towers in their municipalities. And as my colleagues know, this city has a very aggressive ordinance that allows for some control in terms of where cell towers are gonna be located, and it gives our neighborhoods some input so that we don't have situations like a cell tower going up directly in front of someone's door 20 feet from their house. It's really the best we can do under existing law, but this bill, from my understanding, will curtail our ability even to do that very modest amount of regulation. So I would like, if someone would second, for us to, that to be brought back. Thank you, Mr. Sananian. So that we can weigh in, and really all that we can do is pass a resolution as a city, but I think it sends a message to Sacramento that we believe that we should have some control over things like cell towers.
I would like to suggest that staff, I just didn't give us a report first, rather than dumping it on us here. So I don't know the extent of what the measure says, like staff's evaluation of it, and then we can agendize it to do that.
Absolutely, I would definitely, would like for, I agree, we should have a report so that we know if we want to move forward, and we can go from there.
Easy to do after that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? That's Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. As Mr. Karpetian and Mr. Aharonian alluded to, we are having this week two events that the city of Glendale is sponsoring. One of them is tomorrow at the Alex Theater at 7:00 PM, which is the Armenian Genocide Commemoration. The members of the committee, you saw just a few of them before us today, worked very hard, along with Dan Bell and others on city staff, to make this a very moving event. We think everyone who attends will enjoy it. And then on Friday, there is an event at the Glendale Public Library Central Auditorium at 7:00 PM for the Korean Comfort Women, and we do have a small 90-second announcement. The city of Glendale will host its annual commemoration of the Armenian genocide on Wednesday, April 24th, at 7:00 PM at the Alex Theater. The keynote speakers will be Micheline Aharonian-Markham, author of Three Apples Fell From Heaven, and Umit Kurt, a Turkish scholar from Clark University. This year's event will also include performances by singer Hovanes Shabazian, the Shamiyan Armenian School Choir, and the Givorkian Dance Academy. Admission is free, but tickets are required. Complimentary tickets are available at the Alex Theater, the Americana Edbrand Box Office, Glendale Community College, and online at alextheater.org. For more information, call 818-550-4424. Now, the, that's the good news. The bad news is that the tickets are sold out. For the first time in many, many years, all 1,418 seats have been spoken for tomorrow's event. So if you do not have tickets, please try and obtain a ticket before you come, because the box office will not be handing them out, and we will not be able to admit anyone without a ticket. We are completely sold out. The speakers and the committee did a great job of promoting this, and we apologize that not everyone who wants to attend will be able to, but I think it really is a testament to the hard work of the committee. So we hope to see everyone that has a ticket tomorrow evening at the Alex. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I do have some other good news. On the transportation front, we at the MTA, as well as with other sources, have come across and collected a pool of money coming close to $40 million, which is gonna be earmarked for the rail crossings on San Fernando Road. We hope that a design can be implemented that would solve both the Doran and the Brazil Broadway crossing. If that is done, then that, I believe, is the last step along the way to getting our quiet zone. So we're working, again closely, with the city of LA, the Metro Link, the MTA staff, as well as the businesses in that area of Los Angeles, to create a crossing that is gonna be acceptable. Of course, our public safety departments as well, to create a crossing that's gonna be the absolute safest. We're looking at some sort of flyover at this point, so vehicles will either go over or pass below the rail, the rail line, and that would be a great, you know, something that seemed almost impossible a few years ago is coming closer to a reality, and I just wanted to keep everyone updated on that development. Thank you, Mr..
That it? Okay. What is next, please?
Next is a consent calendar, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I have no cards. Is there a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
Next is oral communications.
Okay, have seven this time. I think this sets a record, so.
For community announcements? These are all for the community announcements? Are they all for announcements?
Yes.
Okay. So this will be the three-minute portion. We will revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
If this number continues to grow, they're gonna be moved to the end of the council meeting, because I've never had this many before. But we'll go, there's a lot of things happening in April 2013. First off, is Dr. Stella Bagdassarian, is it? Got it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weaver, council members. My name is Stella Bagdassarian, and I'm here on behalf of Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry with my fellow volunteers. Thank you for giving us the opportunity for coming to you and speaking to you regarding a very important issue, which is cancer. The type of cancer that our organization deals with is leukemia or blood cancer, and each year, over 30,000 patients are diagnosed with this disease. And their chance of survival really is up to finding a donor. Thirty percent of our patients find their donors within their family or close relatives. However, the other 70% really rely on the matches to be found from other donors. And for being minority groups like Hispanics, Armenians, and Jews, it is very hard to find donors outside of the family. So to address this problem, nearly 12 years ago, 2001, we established Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry, which is a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to find compatible donors for both Armenians and non-Armenians. We have since recruited 23,000 donors, received and processed over 1,500 patient referrals, and identified 12 potential matches, and 16 bone marrow stem cell transplants have been done so far. We're a full member of World Men Donor Worldwide and cooperative member of American National Donor Program. As we commemorate April 24th, in order to honor the memory of our ancestors who were perished during the Armenian genocide, we work relentlessly to save every precious life that we can. So throughout our outreach programs, Walk-a-thon, as you know, is one of our main events throughout the year to really raise awareness within our community, and we encourage all the community members to participate for the cause. This year, our Walk-a-thon is going to be held May 4th, Saturday, May 4th, and we start our walk in Glendale Memorial Hospital, and we would like to take this time to thank Glendale Memorial Hospital for sponsoring our walk for the past eight years. So I would like to invite all of the council members and the community to join us for this life-saving operation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sharon Townsend.
Hello, Mayor Weaver. I'm Sharon Townsend, the CEO of Glendale Healthy Kids. Congratulations, Mayor, and to the newly-elected council members. Last week, Glendale Healthy Kids was the recipient of the Los Angeles Business Journal Healthcare Leadership Award. I stood among giants last week, among the CEOs of Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, UCLA Medical Center, the City of Hope in St. Vincent's. Whoever knew that a small Glendale nonprofit would mock among giants? Last week, I was told of the African proverb, "If you want to run fast, go alone; if you want to go far, run together." I'm here to thank you for your support and to all of those who preceded me for helping us run far together. May 1st, next Wednesday, is our 12th annual Taste of Downtown Glendale. You have a brochure flyer in front of you. We'll have music by Dan Beers, more than 40 restaurants and vendors, including Glendale College and Wine Tasting at Massage Envy. I hope you'll join us in running far together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Sandy Kepler.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and council members and city staff. I'm here representing the Days of Verdugo Heritage Association, and we would like to remind you that May is Historic Preservation Month and invite you to come visit the best kept secret in Glendale, the Catalina Verdugo Adobe, located at 2211 Bonita Drive off of Cuyahoga Boulevard between Waboso and Opichi. It's the oldest house in Glendale. The building began in 1828 by Julio Verdugo and was completed in 1860 by his son, Teodoro. His aunt Catalina lived there with the family until her death at age 89. The Days of Verdugo Heritage Association has furnished the two-room casa with authentic period pieces, many belonging to the Verdugos. If anyone would like a tour, both small and large groups are welcome, please call Ann Denis, D-E-N-I-S, at 818-244-2841. We have docents who would love to share the Verdugo history with you, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Next speaker is Joy Fuer.
Hello, Mayor Weaver and city council members. Good evening. My name's Joy Fuer. I'm a longtime Glendalean and also the founder of a local nonprofit called Art From the Ashes. You guys may remember, a few years back, we did a lot of good work with the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation for Wildfire Relief following the station fire. We are hosting this week in Glendale fundraiser to support our 2013 arts programming. As you guys know, we focus on disaster relief. We also do youth programs, inner-city programs, that focus on the arts and environmental engagement for young people. So we are hoping that you come out and support us. We are combining art, food, and community, and so the name of our fundraiser is Comida y Arte, and it's gonna take place at the Wine Vault on Brand Boulevard, 929 South Brand, and it opens on April 25th with an opening reception at 7:30 and runs through the 27th. We have daily exhibition hours from 11:00 to 5:00 PM so that people can come in for free and just see the art. And in the evening, we have a Cordero Negra, Spanish paella party pop-up that's also happening on Friday and Saturday evening along with the exhibition. So we encourage the community to come on out and enjoy each other amidst a really great environment and support one of my favorite nonprofits in existence. And for more information about the event or making reservations for the pop-up, you can visit artfromtheashes.org. And that's it. We hope to have a great event. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sharon Wiseman, followed by Leon Mayor.
Mayor Weaver, council and staff, and everybody listening, I'm Sharon Wiseman from Far North Glendale, and I'm here to invite everyone to the Crescenta Valley Community Association meeting on Thursday, that's April 25th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And our focus this month is on the businesses on Foothill Boulevard in the Glendale portion, and we thank those city staff who have agreed to be there, from the police and from the Economic Development Department. And we hope all residents who are interested in prosperous businesses will join us and help network to see how we can help each other. The La Crescenta Library is at 2809 Foothill Boulevard, La Crescenta, at the corner of Foothill and La Crescenta, and if you'd like a flyer, I'll have some in the back. Please pick one up. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, Leon Mayor. Leon, don't get me in trouble this time. Three minutes, no more. Artie, put the timer on him, would you?
I heard that someone wrote a letter to the news press.
Yes, and I got in trouble.
And I haven't seen it yet, and I'm not sure whether I'll respond to it or not.
You're on your time. Go, go.
Okay. Roll it. My name is Leon Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Weaver, members of the council. My name is Leon Mayor. I'm chairman of the Author, Artist, and Friends Series, and I'm here to announce our next event, which will be May 15th, 7 o'clock, at the Glendale Library. All our events are free, open to the public. We urge parking to be validated for three hours by parking at the structure across the street from the library. That's very important, that you get a validation. Now, on May 15th, 7 o'clock, we're gonna have Mark Garigus and Pat Harris to talk about the book that just came out called Mistrial: An Inside Look at How the Criminal Justice System Works and Sometimes Doesn't. Now, Mark Garigus and Pat Harris are partners, and they take the readers inside some of the most compelling and sensational trials of the past 20 years. They have worked on cases that involve celebrities, Michael Jackson, Chris Brown, Mike Tyson, Winona Ryder. Winona Ryder, just to name a few. Now, Mark Garigus is one of the most recognized criminal defense attorneys in America. His list of high-profile clients include Michael Jackson, Susan McDougall, Scott Peterson, Chris Brown, and others. In his 30-year career, he has tried approximately 300 cases and has served as a regular legal analyst on CNN, Fox, and ABC shows. He's often on a couple times a week. He heads the firm of Garigus and Garigus. Pat Harris is one of his partners. And they are a firm that have an office downtown, but Mark Garigus lives in La Cuyata, and the firm is also proud that they handle about 1,000 or more cases of Glendale descendants of the Armenian genocide who have claims because of insurance claims for the deaths of their grandparents and great-grandparents and so forth. And they're very proud of that. So I could go on and on to talk about Mark Garigus and Pat Harris. They're outstanding lawyers, and we expect the big crowd be there early, May 15th. That is a Wednesday. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. See you next week. And the last speaker, Evelyn Van Orden.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, citizens of Glendale and surrounding communities. I'm here to announce a new event. My name is Evelyn Van Orden, and I'm founder of the Jewel City Knitters Guild of Glendale. We're going to have a charity knit and crochet day all day this Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at St. Luke's Episcopal Church at 2563 Foothill Boulevard in La Crescenta. What we're going to do is we're going to have different knit and crochet projects that we're making for charity. And some of the items include lap blankets, which we're going to donate to local nursing homes for Mother's Day. And we're also going to make chemo caps for cancer patients and items for babies and children in local hospitals. So this event is open to the public. It's free. We're going to have a potluck lunch, and you can bring a chair to sit down on the lawn. Kids are welcome. And you can work on knit or crochet projects. And if you don't know how to knit or crochet, we will teach you. We will have simple projects for people to work on. And if you have any questions about the event, visit our website at www.jewelcityknitters.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last three-minute speaker. What's next, please?
Next, under action items, at 8A is director of community services and parks regarding alcohol beverage service at designated city facilities. 8A1 is ordinance for introduction, amending section 9.20.145 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to issuance of a permit to allow consumption, sales, and service of alcohol on designated city properties. And A2 is a motion to note and file the report. Three is a resolution approving an alcohol permit fee of $100 and a security guard fee of $25 an hour for community services and parks and library arts and culture departments.
Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir. We have for you a proposed ordinance code amendment that deals with alcohol service at city facilities. As you know, currently, through the specified authorization from my office, we can provide service at any number of our facilities. However, when it comes to actually leasing out those facilities and marketing them to any number of users who might appreciate to have a glass of wine for a fundraiser or an event at the Brand Library, for example, or at the ARC, or when there are events up at Duke Magin, remember recently, we had a wine-making, but apparently not a wine tasting. There are a number of opportunities where responsible alcohol service is appropriate, we believe. And so Teresa Alexanyan, our executive analyst, will provide you with the list of facilities that we would like to have that ability to offer to renters and users of those facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members, city staff, and the viewing public. My name is Teresa Alexanyan, executive analyst with Community Services and Parks. Before you today is a report regarding the alcohol beverage service at designated city facilities to formalize a policy identifying the designated facilities and the conditions and requirements to be able to serve, sell, or consume. As Mr. Ochoa mentioned, the current municipal code does allow the city manager the authority to allow alcohol beverages at certain city property. Currently, the city manager evaluates each request on a case-by-case basis without a specific policy identifying certain facilities. The city manager's and the city's policy in practice has been not to allow alcohol at any public facilities. The only exception is at the civic auditorium. Staff is proposing to streamline the process by proposing to amend the current ordinance and formalize a policy identifying designated facilities. The city facilities are being designed and expanded to enhance their profile as gathering places for both public and private events. The facilities identified in this report provide a controlled physical environment for such activities, such as weddings, receptions, birthday parties, special events, seminars, conferences. More and more requests are coming in to the department to be able to serve alcohol in renting our facilities. By establishing a formal policy and allowing alcohol at designated city facilities, we would be able to increase recreational and social opportunities, expand use of the city's unique settings, and increase revenues. The criteria used for recommending the designated facilities are that the facility is within a standalone building where ingress and egress can easily be controlled or managed, such as the Adult Recreation Center or any of the libraries, or it's within an outdoor park area that is enclosed with structural or natural barriers, such as the Catalina Verdugo Adobe or Brand Park, which is fenced in. The facilities that we've identified are the Adult Recreation Center, Spar Heights Community Center, Brand Park Tea Garden and House, Casa Adobe de San Rafael, Catalina Verdugo Adobe, Duke Magin Wilderness Park and Barn, the Civic Auditorium, and Stengel Field for Pro Baseball Only, and all of the library facilities. The guidelines and conditions currently in use at the Civic Auditorium have been expanded to apply to the designated facilities. Alcohol beverage shall mean beer, wine, and champagne, except at the Civic Auditorium, where distilled spirits would also be allowed. The hours where alcohol can be served, sold, or consumed would be in city parks, it would be 11:00 a.m. to park closure, which is dusk. City buildings, it would be 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And the Civic Auditorium, Brand Library, and Art Center, it would be 2:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. The hours may be extended with prior approval from the department director, but no later than 2:00 a.m. And alcohol serving and selling must stop an hour before the end of each event. An ABC license would be required if there will be sale of alcohol at any of the events. Alcohol will not be allowed at events for minors under the age of 21, except for quinceañeras, sweet 16s, or other cultural events for minors becoming of age at the Civic Auditorium only. Security will be required, one security guard for every 75 people in attendance. And if there will be a bottle of alcohol on tables instead of a bar setup, additional security would be required. At the discretion of the Police Department or the Department Director, security personnel requirements may be waived, or additional security may be required, depending on whether the proposed event is based on the criteria of evaluation, which would be whether the proposed event is sponsored or cosponsored by the city, the location, size, duration, or type of proposed event, and the quantity of alcohol that is proposed to serve. For example, a bottle of wine at a book signing versus a wedding, which would have a lot more. Insurance is a requirement as well, both general liability and liquor liability, a million-dollar coverage. And it would have to meet the city's risk manager's approval requirements. And they could either purchase through the city, or they can go individually to an insurance company. But again, it would have to be approved by the risk manager. The proposed policy was presented to the Parks Commission in December, and positive feedback was received and incorporated into the existing policy. Several other cities, such as Burbank, Pasadena, Monrovia, Torrance, and Long Beach, also allow consumption of alcohol at certain city facilities, and there is a benchmark study that's attached to the report as Exhibit 2. Staff is recommending amending the municipal code to clarify the language and approving a resolution which would of establishing alcohol permit fees of $100 for processing the alcohol permit and $25 for the security guard fee. It's $25 an hour per guard, and it would be charged to the applicant. I'm done with the report. I'll answer any questions council may have.
Well, yeah, I forgot to check on the staff this afternoon. It's got to be logical reason. The Civic Auditorium and the Brand Library can't start till 2:00 in the afternoon. Why is that why the others, city parks, city buildings, can start at 11:00? There's got to be rational reason for it. I just couldn't figure it out.
Well, the Civic Auditorium is mostly rented for evening events, and that has been the past practice. We've always allowed it after 2:00 p.m. So that's basically, we kept the Civic Auditorium hours the same as it has been in the past. And with the other facilities, we figured if somebody wants to have a brunch-type event or a wedding ceremony and wants to do a champagne toast, then we wanted to be able to allow that.
Well, yeah, but if they're doing it at the Civic, a wedding or something, a reception, they might want to do it earlier.
We can change it. I mean, that's just how it...
But if all of them are 11:00 a.m., it would make more sense than to say the two biggest, most viable ones start at 2:00. The others are at 11:00 a.m. Knowledge.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Laura Dalian. I'm the supervisor at the Civic Auditorium. The Civic Auditorium has a long-time history now, going until 1:00 in the morning at the latest that they can have their events. And all the private events that are taking advantage of this thing, they want to also take advantage of the rule that is established by the Alcohol Beverage Board, that we can serve or sell alcohol one hour prior to the end of the event time, which is 12:00. That's the latest that we can serve, and it is actually approved. It is one of the rules for the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. So events that are coming to the Civic Auditorium and they're staying at the latest 1:00 in the morning, they are just, they want to continue their event and take advantage of all the advantages that we can offer.
Your history has shown that they prefer to come after lunch, stay late, rather than the other, because city parks, 11:00 to park closure. I can understand, it gets dark. And city buildings, 11:00 to 11:00. No, they're lit, I presume, so I didn't understand the Civic or the Brand Library, unless there's an ABC reason why they limit the hours.
Yeah, I've checked several times with Alcohol Beverage Board, we cannot serve prior to 11:00 a.m. the alcohol at the Civic Auditorium.
Okay, then why are the Civic at the Brand 2:00 p.m.? Wouldn't make more sense to allow it to start at 11:00? Sorry, I didn't discuss that with you guys beforehand.
Mayor Weaver, we can make the policy consistent to all facilities, and we can allow the certain alcohol starting at 11:00 at Civic Auditorium, so it would be consistent. We were comfortable with 11:00 a.m. at all the other facilities in order to be able to accommodate noon time type of events. For example, some of our facilities are very popular for photo shoots, for weddings, and other celebrations. And then after the photo shoot, we're often asked if patrons can have a champagne toast or other types of receptions that would be at midday, so we wanted to be able to accommodate that, because we do get those inquiries. But we can make it consistent across the board and have the 11:00 policy applied to Civic Auditorium, just like all the other facilities that we're proposing.
I think it is clear up, some people might think everything is at 11:00, and find, no, you can't start to 2:00 at these two locations, so I haven't heard any good argument not to. Just a word to the wise... Oh, you can sit down, Jess. When I did my Dreamia Roses event, which I did for eight years, I had to go to ABC and get the permits. I had to satisfy all their requirements. I had to go find insurance companies. So people are going to have to do a little work to do it. I just sometimes wonder, why couldn't we tax every cup of alcohol they touch? We'd make a lot of extra money. But I know you can't do that. No, I think it's a good move on it, just so the people are told what they have to do to comply. And Ms. Friedman.
I have questions, and I have comments, too. I don't know if you want questions first.
Either way.
Okay, we'll ask my questions, and then I'll give comments, too. I understand that all the parties will have to have insurance and all of that, but does that relieve the city of all liability? Or could someone still come back and claim negligence against us beyond what they may get from a private individual or private party?
Right. If an incident happens, usually what happens is the city has brought in, but we have an indemnity, and we also have from the permit, as well as insurance, to cover that sort of indemnity. But we always could be liable if the liability exceeds the dollar amount of the insurance that's provided by the permittee. But again, as from a risk perspective, we've determined that what's being required by the permittees, the million-dollar liability and the liquor liability are sufficient to mitigate against that particular risk.
Okay. My other question is, the requirement of alcohol being sold requiring an ABC license, is that something that's a state regulation, or is that discretionary for us?
No, it's a state requirement. When the state requires it, they require it. Usually for the sale, it's solely within the discretion of the ABC to determine what requires a permit. Usually even a one-day event requires an ABC permit.
If the liquor is sold by the bottle or the glass?
Either one.
Not if you pay a certain flat rate and you're served wine?
Correct, yeah. That's generally considered, as far as I understand, that type of event, that's not a sale for purposes of the ABC regulations.
Right. If you're selling to the guests, if the guest is paying for it, then you would require an ABC license. But if the event planner, it's open bar and it's free to the guests, then you don't require an ABC license.
What if a nonprofit was to do a small event, like a lot of our nonprofits do, and they wanted to do something whereby it's free, but if you want drinks, it's $5? Could they do that without a liquor license?
I don't know for sure how ABC would treat that.
They would?
Yeah. I'd imagine they probably would, yeah.
Okay.
If it's open to the public, they would require an ABC license. So if it's not a private event, if a nonprofit puts on an event and it's open to the public, anybody can attend, they would require an ABC license.
Okay, all right, thanks. So...
That's what happened on Dreamia Roses, on private property. They required an ABC permit, and it couldn't be sold. There was an entrance for you to get in, but all the alcohol was free.
Okay, so would you like me to make my comments now, or wait until people answer questions?
Well, either way, Ms. Sharon wants to...
I have a question regarding the security guards. The $25 an hour guard, does the city provide those? Or do we require them to have... How does that work?
It's a security company that the city works with, so they pay the city, but we pay the security company. So we're just the middleman that takes the money and then pays the security company directly.
And that we decide how many guards would be necessary based on the size and perhaps the time of the event?
One for every 75 people.
My only question was regarding the wording, section 1A, where it states the city manager or a designee may issue a permit. It's probably standard language to have the phrase "may." It just, I'm hoping that doesn't give too much leeway as to, well, some people who meet the criteria that's listed in A1, some people may get it, others may not.
I think the intent here is if someone meets, people that meet the criteria, they'd be eligible for the permit. Again, discretion, though, using the word "may" is to provide city manager or staff the discretion to deny a permit based on their past history or inability to meet the criteria.
Particularly the past history aspect of it.
Okay. Friedman.
I'm in favor of these modifications. I got married in Boston. You can sit down. Okay, thanks. I got married in Boston, and we got married in a public park. It was an old house, kind of like Duke Magin Barn, only the East Coast version. They didn't grow wine there. And we got married there, and it was beautiful, and I know that it was a, because of how difficult it was to book it, I know it's very popular. difficult it was to book it, I know it's very popular, and it was definitely a big fundraiser for that city, and they were able to keep this park beautiful and maintain it because of the events that they did. And it's a very different feel when you book an event like a wedding in a public, in a park rather than in a private venue, and there's something really nice about it. And I think that it's something that would be a great benefit to our community. I think a lot of our residents would be interested in doing this, and something that would be a revenue generator for our city at a time when we need revenue. I was up at Duke Magian, I've been, I was up there recently at an event that took place kind of at sundown, sunset, around that time, and they had put up these lights, and it was just gorgeous, and I kept thinking, this is such a great place to have a wedding, but no one will ever have a wedding here unless they really hate alcohol because you couldn't serve alcohol. And it's, it's a shame, and it's something that we should do. To that end, I think that we should, I would support opening the allowed alcohol from beer and wine to other drinks at these venues because I think that even just, only allowing beer and wine is going to knock out a lot of potential weddings and those types of events. And I think we would need to keep an eye on it and be sure it's not abused, but I think if we really want to get the wedding business, we need to be sure people can serve drinks besides just beer and wine. So I would be open to making that adjustment in this ordinance. I also agree with Mr. Weaver that it should be consistent 11:00 a.m. across the board. And I will tell you that I have had requests to be, for alcohol to be allowed to be served in the libraries and other places from our nonprofits for years, that for them, it's really that they can't get the same amount for tickets, for ticket sales, as if they were able to serve even a glass of wine to people. And also, a lot of times, they'll do something that's an art opening at the Brand Library, and not being able to give their guests a glass of wine, they don't like. They, you know, people expect that when they go to art openings. They expect the little cheese squares and some Ritz crackers and a glass of white wine, and that's kind of what it's all about. And I think that they have felt that they've been handicapped in that respect. So I do agree that we should have some discretion about what we require people to do because, particularly for our nonprofits, I don't think we want to make it onerous on them, and if it's a nonprofit that we know and love, and they've always been well-behaved, to force them to have a security guard always, I think we need to have that discretion to say, Glendale healthy kids, you're well-behaved. You know, you don't, we don't think you really need to have a security guard there. So I think that having a little bit of discretion is, is a good thing because it would make, my goal is to make life easier for these groups, not more difficult and not be more bureaucratic. So I am in support of this, and it's certainly something we'll have to monitor, but given that it's been happening at the Civic for years, and most people don't even realize they serve alcohol, shows that we can have this policy work without there being problems, and a lot of other communities do this.
Mr. Jarian?
One last question regarding the Stengel Field. We, we recently, I think, turned over management to the school district, did we not for that?
We're still negotiating that with them.
So we'll make sure that.
Yes, sir. I mean, if we, if we do turn over maintenance and operation of the field, they would have some degree of say as to what would happen there. But yes, short answer is yes.
Okay.
And, and it would, it would be for semi-pro baseball only, not high school or not college games, but semi-pro, like the Angelenos. It would be that level where we would permit serving of beer and wine.
Okay, are those, are those crowds generally more behaved than?
They're.
Other than the T-ball?
Based, based on my experience, it's, it's, it's an older, more mature crowd and very family-oriented. So the dad would be sipping a beer, and the kids would be drinking Coke and eating hot dogs.
Okay. I'm, I am in favor of this. I think we're leaving a lot of discretion to the director to determine the number of guards required and the type of events and other restrictions, but I think we are losing revenue for the, for the rental of our venues, and I would support this when it comes for a vote next week.
Thank you.
I support it also, for the same reasons that have been stated before.
I love your brevity.
Mostly for economic reasons, and it makes sense. It does make sense to allow at least wine and beer at these facilities. And maybe once there's a proven record that this works and there are minor or minimal or no problems whatsoever, we can think about maybe expanding as to what it is that we allow there.
Yeah, that was a question I was going to have from staff. Freeman, you said beyond champagne, beer, and wine.
Like they're doing at the Civic. They've been doing that at the Civic for years and haven't had a problem, and I, I just think if we want weddings, we really are going to need to do that.
I mean, is that, does staff like to address that point? Or like Mr. Sinanian say, we play it safe?
And by the way, maybe that it's only weddings that get to do that and not, you know, a concert. I mean, I could see putting in that kind of a stipulation, but I, I do think that for, even for nonprofit events, that it might be something that helps their bottom line and gets us more rentals.
Mayor Weaver, staff's thinking was that, that because this is something relatively new and trial and error, other than the Civic Auditorium, that we would take it a bit incrementally and, and begin with, with beer and wine and champagne. And the thought was that there was less likelihood that persons would, would overdo it if it was restricted to beer and wine versus harder liquor. And so we're just trying to take a more methodical, careful approach, but, you know, we, we can do it, we can do it either way with the same criteria and the same controls and the same, exercising the same degree of discretion if you wanted to expand it to other liquor.
Understanding that A, B, C at the end of the day has as much to say about it as we will, for the most part, the number of security guards, the restrictions on the, on the venue and everything else.
Can I suggest that if we do, if you would consider allowing, you know, expanding it to other liquors, that we do that, let the city manager approve those on a case-by-case basis, assuming that there's some criteria you can look at, the number of people, any past history. We trust you a lot, you know, so.
You're accountable. We're out of it.
So anyway, that's a compromise I'd want to throw out. I would just hate to see us lose wedding business to Pasadena or other cities.
Then I'd want to report back occasionally how many events are being requested for other alcoholic drinks.
And it could certainly be a more expensive license for us too. I mean, it's, I think that they would have to pay more.
I'm trying to recall from eight years, I went and got the permit. I mean, certainly, I had to fill out a lot of information on those forms, including a physical layout and where the alcohol would be located on the site. You just can't go out and get a permit. So it is pretty intense what A, B, C does. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm willing to go along. I don't know about you, Mr. Jarian, with.
Maybe what we can do, if it's the council's pleasure, we can research the, the adding of, of hard liquor into this mix and, and interact a little more with A, B, C to see what their restrictions would be, because ultimately, that may be the determining factor, where we can say yes, understanding that A, B, C may be more restrictive in some cases, and, and the adding of, of hard liquor would be less an issue at this point.
Please do, because Dreamer Roses, we had hard liquor, had it, but I can't recall, this was seven years ago now, that I did it.
It's been a while since I was married, but I seem to remember that one of the rules was if you served hard liquor, that your catering company had to be licensed, and they were the ones who actually had to be the bartender. You couldn't have Uncle Billy pouring the drinks. And I think that makes a lot of sense and might give us that, you know, level of a little bit more confidence.
And I, my events was no cater, the individual restaurants, and liquor stores brought their own. So maybe we bring that back.
It's your pleasure, we can bring that back to you.
Bring that portion back, stick with the ones we talked about.
Well, I think we can do that research now, in the intervening time between the reading and the.
Now and. Next week, Tuesday.
Oh, you could bring it back next week.
Theresa Alexander's already done so much of the research, I'm sure it's a phone call away at this point.
Just a quick question. The security would have to be hired from the city.
Through the city.
Through the city.
With, with the concurrence of A, B, C. So we may say, for example, the nonprofit in question at this venue, we don't think it requires a security guard, but A, B, C may say it will have a security guard, so we will work in concert with them.
So we have like a list of vendors to whom we would.
Yeah, we do work with folks at this point. I don't know if they're pre-qualified, but we do, it's a small handful of folks that we do work with.
And I don't know about county health, any of our events require it. I had to go through county health too and submit every restaurant, what they intended to serve, everything. So it's, it can get complicated.
Sure. Just another question. How much is the premium on a million-dollar liability policy?
And that, that would be up to the individuals to get the.
I think, I think mine was in hundreds of dollars, but I.
Is it up to a million, or a million is?
The minimum.
It's the minimum, yeah. So it wouldn't be up to the individuals?
It was in the exorbitant, it was in the hundreds.
Because otherwise it's cost-bay.
Yeah.
Mayor Weaver, council member Sinanian, according to the insurance that, that we would provide, that they would obtain from us if that's what they decide to do, for an event with attendance of zero to 100, the policy would cost with all call $82, without all call $68.
It's minimum.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's relatively affordable. Attendance between 100 and 500, without all call, it's $109, with all call, it's $135, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jarian.
Any other comments?
Just I'm okay with the 11:00 a.m. across the board, if you want.
Okay with the 11:00?
Sure.
Okay with that change. Everything else, we're okay with, and you'll come back with the additional alcohol next week.
But clarification on the A, B, C's requirements when there's a hard liquor being served at.
So there's an ordinance for introductions, so we, we would have time to add that next week.
Right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my recommendation would be for the council to introduce the ordinance, and then we can bring back both the resolution on the fees and the other follow-up on the other items next week and have it all done at the same time.
Sound okay?
Yeah, I have a question about the fees. Is this the type of thing where we can't charge more than the cost of recovery?
Correct.
Because really, we can't make money on this?
On the fees.
That's why I said tax the drinks.
On the rental, we can, yes.
Okay, on the rental.
But not the fees that we charge for the, the permit fee and for the, the security guard fee.
And will we have a different, do we have a different fee for nonprofits than we do for private events and for-profit events in our, I know it's a little bit off the topic, but I'm just curious. We do have a different rate, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
Any other questions? Who would like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
I'll second it. No, you don't second.
I still may have to say one thing.
Yeah, we all do. So 8A1 is taken care of, about 8A2 to note and file. Just to note and file the report.
Motion.
I'll motion, I'll move that we note and file the report.
Second.
Room 2nd row call?
Councilmember Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Jarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Right. And for 83 is the resolution.
Yeah, my, on that.
Putting the fee and stuff, should we hold off on that?
We'll bring that back next week with the ordinance.
Okay, so that completes that. Next week, we'll have the ordinance for approval with the recommended changes we talked about. Okay? Very good. Okay, let's move on to the next item.
The AP is City Attorney and City Manager. This is continued from April 16, 2013 regarding options for appointment of, appointment or election to fill the vacancy on the City Council created by departure of council member Manukian. E1 is a motion appointing an individual to fill the vacancy and directing staff to prepare appropriate reports and resolutions to call for an election to be consolidated with the County of Los Angeles, June 2014 election, for the purpose of, for the purpose of electing a successor to the appointed council member.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Council last week gave direction to staff to speak with a list of former mayors to determine if any of them would be interested in serving in an interim capacity through the period of appointments upcoming to the slated special consolidated election of the State of California in June of 14. We spoke with Mayor Jenkins, Mayor Baker, Mayor Givens, Mayor Reyes, and Mayor Quintero.
Perkins.
Did I say?
Perkins.
I said Jenkins, I'm sorry, Perkins. Jim Perkins. Blended the two together. And it was, it was actually a nice exercise to go through because it's refreshing to talk to so many folks that are so proud of the accomplishments that they have, so dedicated in service to Glendale, and nearly all of them had asked, as they were very flattered to even be considered, the period of time to consider whether or not they would be willing to alter their plans, adjust their lives, so that they might be able to contribute in a real and meaningful way to the policymaking undertaken by this body. So we allowed them to do that and then followed up with them shortly thereafter in speaking with Mr. Perkins. Mayor Perkins had indicated early on that he, while proud of his service, was content to leave his service with the name on the building at the corner and not looking to, to throw his hat in the ring. Of the others, three of the other mayors had indicated that while, again, they were very flattered and would love to serve and continue to serve the community in their own ways through nonprofits, organizations, and other social infrastructure types of groups, that at this point, they could not, would not commit to throwing their hat in the ring, though they were very gratified to be considered, and that they would have left a legacy such that they would be considered, that they were very appreciative to be thought of. Which would leave you at this point with Mr. Quintero, who had indicated that he was willing, as he is the most recent of those mayors, and though he is out of town currently, would be willing to serve.
I'm sorry, did you say the others withdrew their names?
They were not willing at this point, yes, they withdrew. Bittersweet though it was for them, I, again, I don't mind telling you, in talking with them, it was so wonderful to hear folks speak so fondly of wanting to give back and wanting to contribute, but at this point, with their lives, especially on relatively short notice, they could not mark out that time, especially at a point where we were heading into the budget process. So that became more academic than anything.
We have five speakers. Would you like to hear from them first?
Sure.
Okay, five speakers. We, we debated this at length last week, so two minutes, because we've heard a lot of it already, so we'll go through the five and then see what the role of the council is. Tony Passarella, followed by Shahi Corolio.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members, staff, and viewing public. My name is Tony Passarella. I'm a 27-year resident of the City of Glendale. First want to say congratulations, Mr. Sinanian, and secondly, you did the right thing. I don't know what all this is about. I mean, Mr. Quintero, for all intents and purposes, retired. We had a big party for him. Let him stay retired. I don't know whether you folks had a special meeting and you had all this decided beforehand, knowing that Mr. Manukian was going to win running, you know, unopposed, so that was, you knew that was going to happen. The obvious choice is, and since these other candidates, these other, they all declined, and the obvious choice is to ask Shahi, who's going to speak after me, I mean, to me, that's an absolute no-brainer. I mean, the public already voted. He finished fourth, Mrs. Jarian first, Mayor, Mrs. Friedman second, Sinanian third, and Shahi fourth. So I, I don't know, as far as having another election and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, the way I understand it from last week, of the taxpayers' money, that's absolutely ridiculous. So there's your man right there. Thank you. My name is Tony Passarella.
So you know, it's mandatory that we have an election. We do not have a choice. Shahi Corolio, followed by Vartan Karbeshian.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Shahi Corolio, Grande A. resident. For many years, the precedent for filling vacancies on the City Council has been to select potential appointees from qualified candidates from the city. In 1912, Joseph Thompson was appointed to fill a vacated seat. Councilmember Thompson went on to be re-elected in 1914 and 1916. In the 1950s, Jack Potter was appointed to the City Council, and in 1960s and 70s, Jim Perkins was appointed not once, but twice, while being re-elected in between the two appointments. In all of these cases, no such narrowly crafted qualifications were made, such as only ex-mayors. Why would this council choose to take a different path this time and set a standard that the city charter does not require? city charter does not require for any elected official seeking public office? Why ex-mayors? With all due respect to all the ex-mayors, had they had the intention and the interest in serving this community, they would have run for office. The public has spoken clearly. Over 7,000 concerned citizens voted for me, believing in the democratic process. Ignoring the will of the people is a slap in their face. And we are concerned about less and less citizens participating in elections? The actions of this council in the appointment process seem very much like they simply do not want Shahi Karollian, even when the public has clearly stated its preference. I came in fourth, a handful of votes behind Mr. Sinanian, and I believe I deserve the opportunity to serve this community. Thank you.
You're the next speaker, Vartan Karbeshian, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. I wasn't going to speak on this item today, as you can tell, I'm not dressed properly for it, but I got, I received so many phone calls today about this item, and I didn't have the answers for them. And I'm here to ask the questions, I'm not here to dictate which way to go, and I don't envy your position tonight. I wanted to know, even if you appoint, even if it's Mr. Karollian, or Mr. Quintero, or one of the ex-mayors, what is the process after that? How soon, what does the charter dictates that how soon we're going to have an election or not? Or is this going to be a two-year appointment? Or is this going to be a one-year appointment? Because last, last week, my understanding was, if you appoint today, within 30 days after election, you cannot call it a special election anymore, and it's going to cost over $900,000 to have an election this year. But if you appoint for one year and fall under next year's June 14 county election, then it's going to be around $350,000 or $300,000. I think we need to clear the air as to what the cost is if you have an election this year. If you appoint today, I understand the budget issues, you want to have five, five members to vote, so you won't have a deadlock. So if you appoint for next few months, and can you have an election this year or not? If you do, what's the cost? If not, one more time, if you can explain it to the public, I think that's what I was, I was confused, I thought I got it all, but it was a little bit confusing last week. So if you appoint for one year or 14 months until next June, what is the process after that? I understand we have to have an election, let public know, I'm not asking you to appoint one or the other, and public voted on all the, all the items and all the, all the measures as well. So that's all for tonight, and thank you for your time.
Bill Wiseman, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman, from Far North Glendale. And I'll be very brief tonight, I just wanted to state that if you are going to follow the path of appointing a former mayor, then I think Mr. Quintero is a good choice. And I just would like to briefly observe that perhaps if council member Manukian had resigned prior to running unopposed for treasurer, then this empty seat that you see up here on the dais would be occupied tonight by Mr. Karollian. Thank you very much for your time.
What'd you do to your hair?
Actually, Mayor Weaver, I decided it was time to lose the Grizzly Adams look, and there's a very, there's a very excellent charity out there called Locks of Love, and if you have long hair and you want to cut it, you can donate to this group, it's a nonprofit group, and they make hair pieces made of authentic human hair for children suffering from cancer or any other maladies that causes them to lose their hair. And I would highly recommend that for any, anyone who, who wants to, you know, donate their hair to a good cause.
We have a city employee that does that, she's grown her hair out many times over the years, and then cut it and donated it, just like you did.
I may, I may do it again, who knows? Thank you.
Yeah, now you just put the suit on, and you really look sharp. Okay, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Weaver, members of the city council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I firmly believe that the candidate who ran for office, who spent a significant amount of time and treasure and effort, including the effort of many volunteers, should be the person designated to take over the, the seat vacated by Rafi Manukian. I say this to you because even though I got a very late start in my attempt to, to gain a council seat, I am cognizant of the significant amount of effort that most of you have made in the past to get yourself elected. The significant amount of personal treasure that goes into it, and along with the significant amount of donations that come from interested parties in ensuring that someone of, that they favor would hold the seat. So by basically 350 votes, we would have had the person who was in the fourth position reach that seat. In 2005, when Mr. Gus Gomez resigned from the city council in January of 2005, you had for four months, the seat vacant. Most of your votes are generally around 4 to 1. There's very little need to have an emergency and urgent change, but nonetheless, Mr. Weaver, you came in fourth, and you took that position. And so in light of that precedent, yours directly, I think that we should follow along the same lines. I think that there are a significant number of volunteers and people who donated a significant amount of their time to do so. I know that, that was my experience this time, that I decided to do it on a full-time basis. But that was three months of a lot of hard work, you know, and miles and miles of knocking on doors and thousands of homes. I think that this man deserves an opportunity to serve justly, and I don't think that Mr. Quintero should be, you know, brought back to be carried, as on a sedan chair, to be carried across the finish line.
Only comment I would make on that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Gomez was elected in November, so in the election in April, there were four seats, you were voting for four people. That's the fine distinction between then and now, correct?
That's correct, Ms. Weaver.
We can address that further when all the speakers are.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that point in. Okay, that is all the speakers.
Do you allow me to dr-?
I thought there were two more.
Mr. Hooker's card was an oral communications pile, but it may have been.
You want to speak on this item instead?
No, I'm sorry. I have to make a call.
Okay, I have no more cards, I'll miss item.
And my apologies for not setting the table with better context in light of last week's discussion, certainly I'll defer to the city attorney, but to the question about the process and what happens with, with respect to the election. As you said, Mr. Mayor, we are required by our charter to have an election upcoming before the 2015 elections. Now, whether that will be a consolidated election, or it'll be a special election, is really the function of whether or not you appoint. If you do not appoint, then we would be having a special city election, a standalone municipal election. If you do appoint, then we'll be having a consolidated election. If we have the special election, as you recall from the discussion last week, that would be by statute sometime between the very end of July through the first part of September. And the discussion there was, if you have an election right in the middle of summer, when people are either gone, or just coming back from their vacations, or just getting the kids back in school, then certainly folks are going to criticize the timing of that election and/or criticize this notion of voter fatigue, because we just had an election cycle, now we're running through yet still another election. Conversely, if you have the consolidated election, the consolidated election with the county of Los Angeles, which they do as, almost as a vendor, they provide an election service for all those cities that, for the most part, are smaller and contract cities, and they would offer their services to Glendale, but at a cost that really is twice as much as what it would cost us to have our own standalone election. That would be sometime in November, perfect timing, but less than perfect in terms of the cost. That would leave us with a state consolidated election in June of 14. The cost for that election, because the state is rolling out not just a special election for us as a vendor, but all of the other state offices and elections that are going on, that cost is equivalent to our own standalone cost. So if we appoint, then we're going consolidated. If we don't appoint, we're going standalone. There are the pros and cons for each of those. Yes.
One other point to make that's important, that I didn't realize until I was told by the city attorney, I think, two weeks ago, is that if we want to do our own special election at the end of summer, we cannot appoint, so we have to have only four council members. The charter does not allow us. I had originally thought, oh, well, we'll appoint someone, and then we'll have, we'll still have five bodies, and then we'll have this special election, but we can't do that, the charter doesn't allow that, which is something I think we should look at at some point, because I think there's times when that would be a preferable option, but just to, just to make sure that people understand what the choices are here.
Which perhaps is a segue into this discussion of going with four people, and, and whether or not the fourth person, the fourth highest vote getter, should be given that, that fourth seat. Without any disrespect to Mr. Karollian, because I, you know, going through that election process, no doubt, is arduous, but I think the distinction between, as I think it was Mr. Milano had commented about, Mr. Weaver's election in '05, the voters actually were asked to vote for four people, is my understanding, four candidates. Not, you know, what we have today is the voters were asked to vote for three candidates. So the makeup of what the distribution of those votes could be is, could be vastly different from a situation where people are voting for three, or people are voting for four. Somebody who may have finished further back in the pack may very well have jumped forward to some level. We don't know that because the voters weren't asked that, that's a different question. It sounds very similar, but it is different. Which then leads to this final question about a discussion that was had by this council last week, as to what do you want, what is most equitable in terms of the appointment? If it was going to be quote-unquote caretaker, somebody who would come in, be very conscientious, be wanting to, to serve for the sake of service, again, without any disrespect to any of the folks who ran and were not elected, but the idea being that they would be here and then not run in an upcoming election, as they run from, from the seat of what is effectively an incumbency, which provides to some degree an advantage over the rest of the field. What this council had discussed at the last meeting was to say, no, let's look for that caretaker who, for all intents and purposes, though we cannot require it, we have strong reason to believe that this caretaker will not run in the next election, and in doing so, provide the levelist playing field for that field of candidates that would run in a special election in June of 14. That really is, is what bred the discussion about who among Glendale public servants would be most likely to not seek an election, a reelection as an incumbent, and from there, you distilled down the list of former mayors.
Regardless of we appointed Mr. Karollian, appointed Mr. Quintero, or one of the others, we're still going to have that special election.
Consolidated, consolidated.
Consolidated, which could only be November or next June.
We believe it could only really be June, when you consider the language and intent of the charter, because of the extraordinarily high cost of, of the fall election with the county.
And we don't need to do one within 180 days, that'd be the summer.
That would be the special election, special standalone election, which is an option to you, to run with four members of this council, recognizing that your election would be sometime between, I think it was July 30th through the first part of September.
Which is, where people are traveling, we have a holiday thrown in, it's just, we just, I think, concluded it was about time.
That's, that's the direction, that was the foundation of the direction that you gave to us last week.
Okay. I gave, I gave initial comments last time, and I got chastised that I didn't wait to last. So since I've been duly dressed down, would like to say something, or nominate somebody. I have comments to make, but.
Well, if you're going to take comments, I'll, I'll start in, Mr. Mayor. My, my primary criteria for this, filling this seat is that, my primary two criteria are that, number one, the individual that is appointed not run for election the very next election, because that will give that person an unfair advantage over any other candidate who seeks to run. Being an incumbent takes a lot of hard work, and not just running an election, but winning an election. Mr. Milano, that's the other part that you talked about. It's not just running, it's running and winning, that's the part that counts. And coming in as an incumbent gives you a huge advantage over anyone else. The second criteria is that that person who's going to be coming in, in the middle of a budget cycle, where there, where there will be difficult financial issues to understand and deal with, that person should have a working knowledge of the budget and have some experience in doing that. That is why I brought out the, the concept, the idea, that we look at former mayors. Someone said, how about we look at former city managers too, but I didn't want to go there that way, that was a hot subject, no, we didn't want to go there. So that's my, those are my issues to, to Mr. Karollian, or anyone else that feels that they should have this position, Mr. Engel, Mr. Barnes, it would be unfair to appoint any one of you to the position, because you'll be running as a strong, recognized incumbent the very next time, having gained a seat not by your own campaigning and success in the campaign, but by the actions of this council. Now, I am, I am surprised to learn that the, the three potential former mayors have dropped out. I think Eileen Givens would have brought a great attention to detail on the dais. I think Sheldon Baker, with his great legal knowledge, would have brought great level of analysis. I think Rick Reyes would have brought a certain level of camaraderie to the council, which, which I think sometimes we need. So I'm sorry that they, they dropped out. I would have, I would have cast my vote for Rick Reyes. I'm sorry he's out, though. I'm not kidding either, Rick, if you're watching. I do have an issue, however, that I stated last week, and that is the, the issue of the charter, and I made my position clear. I submitted a legal brief to the city attorney, as well as members of council. Let's just leave it to be said that there still is a difference of opinion on that, and I, that's not for, for me to, to determine, I'm, I'm not a judge here, I'm just a member of the legislative body at this point. I haven't heard much from any of our strict constructionists out there, Professor Zavos. I think this is as important as any water transfer issue that you are so involved in and so zealous in, in defending. Mr. Quintero is a skilled council member, he's intimately familiar with the budget, he's intimately familiar with the issues facing this council. I hesitate to cast a vote against him. I did that last time, and I think I paid the price for it, when I supported Mr. Manukian. And let me get this straight, if Mr. Manukian had resigned prior to the election, let's say one day prior, or one week prior, then Mr. Karollian would be seated here, is that, is that a correct understanding?
Mr. Jarian, I wouldn't say one week or one day prior, because all the ballots go out, it had to be sufficient time prior to the council having called the election. But if he had resigned prior to the council calling the election, that seat could have been added to, would have been added.
When it was obvious that he was the only candidate for treasurer at the close of the filing period.
Because we actually called, the council calls the election as it has to, before the filing papers are due, so if you recall, for example, Mr. Manukian filed, and there were four of the candidates who initially pulled papers as well, so it's just one of those things, it just, I don't know how we could have foreseen that occurring.
Okay, those are my, those are my comments. I want to go along with the group. I think it's important that we have a, a strong plurality on this vote, if not a unanimity, because this person is going to be working with us, albeit for a short period of time. And then I would welcome any potential candidate. And then I would welcome any potential candidate to throw their hat into the ring for the next consolidated election, which we would be most likely holding in June. June of 2014.
That's correct. I mean, and our, along with the nomination, the direct, the recommendation of our office and city manager would be to, to direct us to start the process for the June 2014 election.
Okay. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Any comments? Sinanayan?
I'll, I'll go with the group. I agree with Mr. Najarian that we need to show some type of unity, or plurality, or unanimity in this issue, because it's very important, and it's going to impact the city and the city council for the next year.
Well, I'll just say that I have sympathy for Mr. Corollian's position, and, you know, he did come extremely close. But it is a different election, and the dynamics could have been very different if there had been four seats open. And in addition, when you take the two incumbents out, and not just us, but any race, if you take the incumbents out of the equation, you're going to get possibly a larger or a different group of people running. And I think the proof will be in this next election. If it's the exact same candidates, I think we could look back and say, well, we should have just appointed, you know, the person who came in fourth. But if it's a different group of people, which I suspect it will be, I think that it's less of a compelling argument. Because I think that once you do take the top three finishers out of the race, you get a lot more people who are willing to run at that point. So I, I think it's a, it's a different thing. And plus, if the charter had wanted the fourth person, or the, the person who finished just out of the running to take that position, they would have said that. That would have been in the charter. It's such an obvious thing that I know that that was considered. And not only didn't they put that in the charter, but they also don't even allow us to make a full appointment, because they don't want that incumbency to be appointed. That's the point. Mr. Corollian pointed out all of the, all of the appointments that have taken place over the years. But let's not forget, the charter was changed in 2005 to prevent that very thing. The charter was changed to say, you cannot appoint for a term, or even for the remainder of a term, you have to have an election. That was the change that was made. You must have an election. So they, they were very clear about they wanted the people to be able to choose that seat. That's the change that was made in 2005. My preference would have been to have Mr. Quintero, or someone who was a placeholder, to serve until we could have that special election in September. That would be my preference. But we can't do that. The charter doesn't allow that. I don't, I don't quite understand why, but they don't allow that. I'm sure they had their reasons, and there was something they were trying to prevent from happening. But that would have been my preference, and I was surprised when we came back, I think a week before this issue came up last week, and we just found that out. Because that had been what was in my mind. But I agree, I, I spoke to the city manager, and he believes that it would be a handicap for us to continue with four members, that we run the chance of deadlocking on important issues and not being able to move, move forward, and that doesn't benefit the city. So I, with that said, I would like to nominate Frank Quintero for that appointment, for that interim appointment.
Is there a second, and I'll comment?
Do you want to comment after the second?
Either way.
Don't have to.
And I, I kind of read the tea leaves, and I thought was occurring. I have a different philosophy. I came out last week and said Frank Quintero was the person I was going to support, because we were talking about mayors, and not having somebody with incumbency add to the title. But if I had been asked personally, with no constraints, no nothing on, and I said Mr. Shai Corollian should have been put on, because he blew out the next runner-up by about three, four thousand votes. He's run before, and he's done quite well in his elections. But it wasn't going that way. That's why I came out for Mr. Quintero, which would serve what the majority of this council wanted, somebody that knew the system and could step right in. I talked to Mr. Quintero, I think I was the first one to ask if he'd consider doing it. And he said he'd consider it. And I said, well, then, then you can stay on the airport commission, because he's done a bang-up job on the commission. He's been on the ad hoc committee, working with the city of Burbank on airport issues. So it made every good sense to do that. Plus, I said, I think Frank has a good wit. You could add that to the council dais up here. So that's where I'm at. I'll back Frank Quintero, obviously, because I said it before, and I'm a man of my word. But I'll tell everybody right now, I'll be out campaigning for Shai Corollian in 2014. I will endorse him, and I will try to get him support. He's shown that he deserves to be on here by his performance in the past elections. And plus, he's a former city employee. He knows the ropes. And I'm encouraging him to stay involved, because I hate these candidates that run, and they've never attended a council meeting, never watched a council meeting, and then they go out and run and can't answer half the questions in the debates. So anybody wants to ought to be out here. Mr. Milano's been here all the time. Mr. Mo Hill's been here. They at least know, even if they don't agree with us, they know what we've been talking about. And that's very important to me. So there I am, I'm with Mr. Quintero, but I can't make a second. So does anybody want a second? Has been a motion.
A second.
Thank you, there's a second. Further discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanayan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. And would somebody please call him in South Korea and tell him to get his tail back here? There's a meeting next week, and the budget starts in two weeks, correct?
Mr. Mayor, the, the motion at 8B1 also included, so if I could just ask the council to make the motion excluding the nomination part, because you've already taken care of that, but the motion directing our staffs to prepare the necessary materials to, to call for an election for June 2014. And just by way of information, that's something that doesn't occur until we get closer to the election, but at least that way we have the direction to go forward on that.
Do you want a separate motion on that?
Yes, if I may.
Is there a motion?
I'm with 8B1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanayan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. What is next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay. First speaker is Jamie. And I will need your last name.
They don't.
Mr. City Attorney.
They don't have to.
No address, no last name?
I, I live in Glendale. I give my zip code. I'm not comfortable.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. She, we can't require her to provide that information.
Seventeenth year, I just learned something.
Thank you very much. But it's, forgive me if I'm repeating anything that's been mentioned in the last few weeks. I was, I was not able to come last week. I was working. And I mean no disrespect, but I was, Mr. Sinanayan had said, it was reported by the Glendale news press, I believe, that, regarding the, the comments that he had posted on YouTube, that his actions, my actions, will speak for themselves, and they have. It, it appears that he lied about a smear campaign. It appears that, as if he has misled the people of Glendale and the council. And the people of Glendale deserve a recall, with full disclosure of his conduct and his comments in both English and in Armenian. From his behavior, it seems as if Mr. Sinanayan has grave issues with rage, common sense, truth, and accountability, not to mention the sheer disdain and contempt his comments have shown the Muslim, Mexican, and gay community, and the complete lack of, the complete lack of respect he has shown the Armenian community with his inexcusable behavior. No one after such irresponsible and reprehensible conduct should be allowed to represent our city, any city. And from now on, Mr. Sinanayan's actions will speak for Glendale. Shatchna Ralichun.
And the next speaker is Gray James. Followed by Harry Zavos.
I had so much fun last week, I thought I'd come back. My name is Gray James. I live in Glendale, and I'm still nervous. In Glendale live many good people who are just trying to make a living, and raise a family, and not get beat up by hate. I got an email last week from one of them, telling me why she would not be standing before city council to speak to Mr. Sinanayan's hate speech. In part, it read, quote, "I am already an easy target, and I'm just not willing to subject myself or my kids to the outcry from the thousands of Armenians that support him", unquote. Though Mr. Sinanayan's comments were only ever the arrogance of one man, hate begets fear, begets more hate, and so on. You are my city council. You wanted this job, you campaigned for this job, it was your objective to be here. Sometimes being here is negotiating challenging topics, uncomfortable issues, and people who look like me. In the matter of Mr. Sinanayan, some city council members didn't want to do their job. Some city council members wanted to brush this thing under the carpet, sidestep it, hope to forget about it, threaten other people for pursuing it, and ultimately be content to sanction it. Not engaging in the job you campaigned for disenfranchises the very people you were here for, and that is all of us, including the person too afraid to come here to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Zavos, followed by Zeyra Sidiki, member colleagues. I told you, you can speak after the speaker if you have anything to say. Zeyra, I hope I pronounced your name right this time.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. Soon, this council will begin the budgetary process. The city has made it clear that as part of that process, it intends to transfer from electrical fees approximately $21 million of GWP receipts to pay for general appropriations, to pay for parks, fire, libraries, and the like. It also claims that this transfer is authorized by the city charter. By reference to the charter's actual language, I repeatedly shown that the only authorized transfer of GWP monies for other than GWP uses is restricted to the general reserve fund. This distinct charter-established fund does not exist to pay for general appropriations. Slide already? More to the point...
Can we have the slide, please? It's on the TV already. You can go ahead.
More to the point, the distinct fund that is established for the payment of general appropriations expressly exempts GWP receipts from going there. Article Roman numeral 11, section 14 of the charter reads in pertinent part, and I'm now reading from that charter, "The general budget fund is hereby created. All receipts from general levy, licenses, fines, permits, and all other receipts except from Glendale Water and Power and certain other described receipts," again, "receipts except from GWP shall be credited to said fund. And all disbursements on account of general appropriations are charged to said fund." We cannot rationally agree to disagree with what the charter says in black and white, and yes, I guess in red. And what the charter says is that GWP-identified receipts are excluded from going to the fund that pays for general appropriations. It's also undisputed that in defiance and in direct contradiction of this charter provision, the city's practice is to transfer approximately $21 million of GWP receipts to pay for general appropriations, the very thing Article 11, Section 14 precludes. And it's further the city's position that, that the charter authorizes this practice. When I put the city's practice and position up against this charter provision, I feel I've stepped into an Alice in Wonderland world. I repeatedly asked the city how it can reconcile its practice and position with the express exclusion in Article 11, Section 14 of the charter. No satisfactory answer has been forthcoming. Ratepayers deserve an answer. Maybe tonight we'll get it. Already, end of slide. The need for an answer is intensified by the fact that we are told that critically needed capital improvements, critically needed repairs and replacements for the utility are being deferred, because without a rate increase, there is no money for them. At the same time, $21 million of GWP receipts that can be used for those improvements is being transferred in violation of the charter to pay for general appropriations. Will we be given the answer we deserve? How in the face of Article 11, Section 14, can the city cannibalize the utility to pay for general appropriations? I have a few seconds left, and without detracting from the need for an answer to my question, let me just say this, that if the city needs that $21 million represented by the transfer to support the priorities of its budget, it is not without alternatives. It can legally increase taxes to raise that $21 million, subject to a vote of the people. And it can do so legally without raiding the utility in violation of the charter.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, it was during my legal research this past week regarding the charter and the interpretation of charter language, that I did come across the, the leading cases of Wu versus the city of LA, and Lundgren versus Duke Majin, where I learned, and had a discussion with the city attorney, that any ambiguity in such charter language may be resolved by looking at secondary sources. I think that that language is very ambiguous. There are contradicting provisions. Therefore, the solution is to look at the intent, the voter's intent and the legislative intent of these, of this language. And it is in looking back to the very first year after this language was passed, that we saw the very type of transfer that Mr. Zavos says is inherently contrary to the charter. So I just have to say that I disagree with Mr. Zavos. In light of my new research on the, the manner in which to interpret charter language, and sometimes ambiguous charter language, and I feel confident that we are dealing with the GWP transfer the way the voters and the council intended it to be.
If we can't just, because this discussion of, the question has not been answered. It's been answered repeatedly. And, and Mr. Zavos doesn't like the answer, so much so that he's begun both changing his argument and changing the terms that he uses. The, the charter language that he continues to go back in cite refers back to operating revenues, not GWP receipts, a distinction that is important as you look through the, the matriculation of money through the GWP accounts, which brings this last point that he seems to have become infatuated with as it relates to the, the general reserve fund. The, the language he shows up there says that the GWP receipts, such as they are, may not go to the general fund. And in point in fact, they don't go to the general fund. They have and continue to go to the water revenue fund, the electric works revenue, or the electric revenue fund, and then work their way through that process there, ultimately to be transferred to the city's general fund. I mean, at the end of the day, that's, that's the distinction without a difference that he seems to hang his hat upon. It has been asked, it has been answered, it is disagreed upon. We certainly have, both city attorney, city council, myself, have agreed that the language, as Mr. Najarian just said, is ambiguous in some places. And we fully grant that. What Mr. Zavos has never done has been intellectually honest enough to say, yeah, it is ambiguous, and there is room for honest disagreement on this matter. And that's unfortunate, because try as we might to make sure that the language is made unambiguous, that would result in losing an argument which apparently he cannot stomach.
May I just add one more point? With respect to the language he showed up there, that that transfer cannot go into the general fund. Looking at that legislative history of that particular provision, when the council adopted the resolution to put the tran- to put the transfer on the ballot, at the same time, they said very specifically that this transfer was intended to balance the city's need to raise revenues through taxation. So aside from the practical difficulties of raising revenue by going to a vote, it was very clear that the council at the time when they put this on the ballot very specifically intended that this transfer would mitigate the need for raising additional revenue through taxation, so much so that with reference to this dichotomy, supposed dichotomy between the General Reserve Fund and the General Budget Fund, the legislative history on this is very clear. For purposes of budgeting, every time we budget, every year, the funds that are in the General Reserve Fund and the funds that are in the General Budget Fund are supposed to be treated as the same, except with respect to a very specific part that's supposed to be set aside because of the collection of property taxes. But it's very clear the legislative history is on the fact that for purposes of accounting, for purposes of accounting for the General Budget Fund and the General Reserve Fund, they were, in essence, the same thing. Though with that all... And again, I have to echo what Mr. Ochoa said, that we have addressed these issues, and there's a disagreement with them. But we have, and I would submit as well, is that the issue, the very first issue of what is the transfer based on operating revenue has never been satisfactorily addressed by Mr. Zavos, in my opinion, that that language, the terminology used in the legislative history of what is operating revenue very clearly defines it as revenue, not anything other than operating revenue.
And may I add that this item has been discussed infinitum, on and on and on and on. And we finally said we will agree to disagree. I'm reading that we're in violation of the state constitution, the city charter, whatever. And may I suggest, maybe staff, nobody alike it, file a lawsuit against us, and we'll win. We are not in violation. The city's been here over 100 years and to suggest we've been doing this illegal activity for decades and decades? Give me a break. That is not happening. We do audits, all kinds of audits. It's not happening. So one or two people getting up every week for months now, saying the same thing over, nobody up here is listening. Guarantee it. I think about other things because I've heard it all. Mr. Zavos? You're shaking your head. Yes, you know we're not listening to you. So I guess you're talking to the TV audience, and they're not listening either. Look at the voting on the polls. The people that said were illegal, where they finish in the polls in the campaign? Rock bottom. So go file a lawsuit against us. Let's get it over with because you're not winning any friends here on this item. Next speaker, Zara. Did you bring some friends this time? Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you. My name is Zara Siddiki. I'm a Glendale High School freshman. I have a... Well, actually, I'll start. A part of life is making mistakes, but it takes real courage to admit those mistakes and own up for your actions. I spoke here last week, and in that week, the situation has changed. Mr. Sinanian, taking the responsibility for your actions is something I'm incredibly proud of, of Glendale's community. And I'm up here today to say thank you for doing the right thing and proving yourself as an upcoming role model to the whole community of Glendale. I was incredibly humbled and honored by the words said about me in the press this week. But most of all, one specific quote. Sorry. I see her as the future of America, which was said by Mr. Sinanian. And I hope to live up to that quote. So I think that now everything is out in the open, and we can all move on and come together in the town of Glendale. And I'd love to have an interfaith event or mural one thrown to invite the whole council and build bridges again. Anyways, my main reason to be up here is to say thank you for stepping up, and I look forward to seeing the great things that will happen in Glendale because of the whole council. And I have a thank you card.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you mind leaving your phone number? I'd like to talk to you. Would you mind?
Yeah.
Pass the card over. Just put your phone number on the card. I was trying to find it for the last week, so... I hope your friends think you did good again. Okay. The next speaker is Nancy Kent, followed by Charles Hooker.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of South Glendale, near Maple Park. I used to attend Glendale City Council meetings quite frequently, but I don't think I've been to a council meeting in about three years. Councilmember Sinanian, at the March 12 city council meeting, when it was on the agenda to remove you from a city commission, you had many people who came here to speak about what a good person you are and the good things you have done. And I'm convinced that you have done many good things in your life to deserve their enthusiastic support. But I don't know you the way that your supporters know you. I only know you by the way you handled the challenge of an anonymous person's revealing angry hate speech comments that, after the election, you admit that you posted on YouTube a few years ago. Ron Kay wrote in the April 21 Glendale News Press that when you admitted to him after the election that you did write these comments, you used the word regret more than 20 times in your 40-minute conversation with him. I'd like to know if one of the things that you regret is how you and some of your supporters verbally attacked Councilmember Friedman at the March 12 city council meeting. I think Councilmember Friedman and the man who does the Tropico Station blog deserve a public apology from you about how you attacked them instead of taking responsibility then for the comments that you have posted years ago on the Internet. By that March 12 city council meeting, Congressman Adam Schiff, Eric Garcetti, Wendy Grule, and Paul Krikorian had withdrawn their endorsements of you because of the allegations about this hate speech. Now, probably you still don't see it this way, but it would have been unacceptable for our city council to ignore this, this elephant in the room, since the Glendale City Council has removed city commissioners for what seemed like much less offensive actions. I was very well represented by the three council members who asked you the simple yes or no question, March 12, whether you had or had not written these comments. It was bizarre that you not only wouldn't give them a yes or no answer, but you said things like you had already answered them when it was clear that you hadn't. At last week's council meeting, Mayor Weaver said only the voters could remove you from office. There is another way that you could leave office, although I really don't think this is going to happen, but you could resign. Councilmember Sinanian, some things that you might actually do, though, would be to reach out to groups that are probably most offended by your Internet comments, like the Glendale High School Gay/Straight Alliance Club or adults or the youth group at the local mosque, the Islamic Center of Glendale. And perhaps you will turn out to be the most kind and benevolent councilperson that Glendale has ever seen to make up for the hate speech that you posted several years ago. Thank you.
Next speaker, Charles Hooker, followed by Herbert Milano. Charles? John? Okay. Herbert Milano, followed by Nadia Simone.
Mayor Weaver, members of the city council and staff. My name is Herbert Milano. My intent today was to read an essay that I wrote about the Armenian genocide and the issue of prejudice and how it becomes a source of... That I believe is the leading cause for systematic and sustained atrocities, the excuse that certain governments who have a particular inclination to remove the minorities that they do not wish to have in their midst basically pursue. And basically, that was my intent to write about it. I guess I'll just publish it and see what comes of it. Because I'm now faced with the concept of supporting, to some extent, the effort that Mr. Harry Zavos, Professor Zavos, has done with regard to the Glendale water transfers from the Glendale Water and Power. And I agree with Mr. Najarian. There is an area of confusion within the charter that needed clarification. And I approached it as an accountant would by looking at the text and what it actually says. The text basically says that after you take the operating revenues and pay for the day-to-day expenses of the utility, you still need to put money away for a depreciation fund used in the public sense, meaning that you've put money aside to improve and repair the infrastructure. It also has an allocation for it to put aside money in a sinking fund for the bonds. That you cannot deny. It's there. It's clear. The latter part is the amount of money that then was left over that goes into a surplus fund. The interesting part about it is that in that surplus fund, the city could opt to remove up to... Well, it doesn't say up to. It says 25% of the revenues. And so I wonder why the structure of the language was like that. Because if the surplus fund doesn't have up to 25% of the revenues, then you can draw it. Well, when we looked into it carefully, we found out that the surplus fund was much greater than 25% of the overall revenues of the city. In fact, it was quite substantial. And so what is missing in the language are the word "up to." If it said "up to," everything will be clear. There would not be any apparent confusion. And I think that any reasonable person